We have a sign appeal and an open public hearing for a preliminary plat review. We'll have the, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes from the last meeting? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Spanhour?
Second.
Second by Hurst. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Holly, would you have a comment?
With the minutes approved, I would just say that we have a, two issues today. We have a sign appeal from Fairway Outdoor Advertising. They have two representatives here. And then the next hearing that we have is regarding a preliminary plat and the developer, Mike Olson, is also here.
Okay. Would you like to present the sign appeal?
Fairway Outdoor Advertising owns an existing sign located at 1414th Street Northwest. I believe there's a picture of the existing billboard on your monitors. The packet should contain a letter from Fairway Outdoor Advertising that we treated as an application and appeal, so you won't see the usual permit application in there if you were looking for that. Our sign ordinance contains specific regulations for off-premise outdoor advertising signs and on-premise signs. We currently don't have a specific ordinance for dynamic billboards. We do have an ordinance along for automatic changing signs. They allow for signs with an off-premise message. The reason that Fairway was denied a sign permit for this primarily is for that reason that we didn't have a specific ordinance that allowed for the off-premise electronic, automatic changing signs. There was also a question of a seven-foot setback. The ordinance was not clear about the measurement of the setback. The pole did meet the setback. The front, one of the front corners does not meet the seven-foot setback. However, there is no, there have been no prior issues with regards to the street being able to be maintained or any of the area around that sign being maintained due to the clearance. The sign ordinance also requires that the billboard or outdoor advertising signs not exceed 22 feet in height. For the location of this particular sign in a parking lot, the clearance underneath needs to provide for, again, movement of vehicles and other things of that nature. So the height of the sign in this case is, I believe, is it 30? Yeah, it's 30 feet. The planning commission was, brought this sign appeal similar to another sign appeal that we did in 2011. In that case, there was also an existing billboard or outdoor advertising sign that was located near the QuickTrip location. At that time, I, we had a lot of questions about the safety issues regarding dynamic billboards and the times between the advertisements and we looked at that issue pretty in-depth. And that sign did, was granted, the appeal was granted for that sign and the sign did go up. We've had it then for a couple of years. There have been no significant complaints or any complaints that we know of with regards to that sign. I think most of the comments that I've heard have been positive. The planning commission will weigh the facts that they've received in the packet. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer those. Again, the representatives from Fairway are here as well to answer some of your questions. Some of the things that you may be considering, and this is similar to a variance, but it's hard to fit this into a, an existing process that we've done before because it isn't specifically accounted for in our ordinance. But some of the things that you can consider would be, one, that our ordinance does not address dynamic billboards currently, that the, there is an existing dynamic billboard in Austin for which an appeal was granted in 2011, that the proposed change to the existing billboard would change the sign face from static to dynamic. The setback height and sign area would not be modified. And I guess I didn't make that clear earlier. The current billboard would be, have the same, would have the same dimensions as the current billboard. All the requirements of the ordinance are met for the existing and proposed signs. The billboards meet the setbacks for being near any property used for church, school, park, government, or museum purpose in the B2 district. And I have nothing else. If you have some questions?
I just have one. Is it, is it on both sides?
Yes, it is two-faced billboard, correct.
So dynamic on each side then?
Yes, and that if you're familiar with the location, there is not a lot of residential, you know, in either side, the, either direction where the sign is facing.
I don't think there's any residential.
Yeah, I don't think there is any. Across the street is.
Yeah, it's right by Sinclair and McCall.
Yeah, it's like a tenth of a mile from the intersection of I-90.
Apartments or.
It's all commercial.
Apartments would be the closest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think those would even be affected at all.
Is there any other questions for Ms. Wallace?
So, I guess regarding this ordinance, there's currently no intention of altering it to encompass this, or I guess I'm a little confused in terms of what the parameters are that we're working with.
Right. We could use a modification to our ordinance to account for the dynamic billboards. However, my understanding is that because of our market size, that there might not be a lot more dynamic billboards, except maybe in long, far into the future. But yes, that is something that we would look at, not, you know, we, we didn't develop anything since the last sign and, but I, you know, it was three years since the last, last appeal. And I think it was handled a little differently as a non-conforming use. And this was, this was the, after the investigation by the planner who was the interim planner, this was how she felt we should proceed, which is what was detailed in your packet.
So I guess my suggestion would be that we do develop an ordinance that would encompass the dynamic because I think we all would like to approve it and be able to approve it without having to grant a variance because our, the experience of the community is that that's a good thing and, and maybe it won't come up again, but, you know.
Yeah.
I guess, Holly, I'm willing to give you a few more weeks on the job before you get right on that.
I did see, Rochester has an ordinance that a few of the smaller cities along the river, Mississippi River, have looked at from my research. And then they had adopted theirs from, I think, some of the suburbs and the cities. Just being more concerned about, I guess, the typical billboard concerns that you want to keep them in areas where they're more appropriate to the traffic going by and, and not in.
Isn't that something though that we can do, like in the future?
Yes.
We can address this tonight so that we can either say yea or nay and then put that on our work session to make sure that's something that we do in the future. I mean, we would not have to table this issue tonight just because of that.
No.
But I think the future is for billboards to be this way. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I think.
If there's no more questions for Ms. Wallace, maybe we can have the representatives come forward and maybe they can give us a little insight into that because I tend to agree with the other commissioners that it's something that although it's not prevalent, it's, I think it's probably something we should address. Is there any other questions for Ms. Wallace?
No.
Thanks. If you could come forward and state your name and your address for the records, please.
Sure.
My name's Todd Wicker. My address is 4220 Ninth Street Northwest in Rochester, Minnesota.
Raykosus, general manager for the division. I am at 2927 Mayowood Common Circle, southwest Rochester, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any general statement you want to make before we?
I just, I just wanted to add to the thought about the, the future. There's no doubt that the benefits that, that can be derived for this sort of style of billboard is there. They're quite expensive to, to work with right now, so we have to be very limited as to where we, you know, do place them. Consequently, we think that Austin has been a very good market for us. We've had a lot of positive participation, public service messages. I don't think we've ever had the sheriff's department, excuse me, participate, but they can be taken over by the sheriff's department for amber alerts or, or any other sort of emergencies that take place. Thank goodness that we haven't had to do that. But I don't think we're really talking about putting one on every corner, just to kind of clarify that thought.
But isn't the interstate corridor, wouldn't that be prime territory for this type of billboard?
My opinion would be no, just because.
I'm not even sure you're allowed to, actually, because of distracted traffic.
Well, the, the state regulations do allow, but they also require you to meet the local ordinance first. So in, in that answer to the, should we adopt an ordinance, I would say, yes, you should. But from a sales standpoint, cars going 65 or 70 miles an hour really don't lend itself to be a targeted audience that could reach a lot of, the advertiser's messages could reach a lot of viewers, as opposed to just a slower traffic or even a, a traffic light situation.
Same.
So would this work similarly then in terms of their like six or eight second segments?
They're, they're 10-second increments, yes.
Okay. Maybe somebody with a better memory than I could, didn't we have some conditions on the original sign that had some of the timing and the public service potential to it? Do, anybody remember that?
You're talking about from 2011?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we altered the time that was originally.
We have a public, we have a slot reserved for the public service messages. We have, we have the similar sized units in Ovotana, Faribault, Albert Lee, excuse me, and we have the same scenario. We, we run them 10 seconds each. Each one has a slot for PSA messages. We adhere to the standards of the community as far as lighting and any issues that you might have. We have the ability to turn them down and, you know, adjust to whatever requirements are, whatever the city would like us to, to adhere to.
Commissioner Minnow, the only thing I remember from that meeting was we had a stipulation that it had to be landscaped in that area.
And I can speak to that. I do recall.
That was all I remember because I was at that one.
I do recall that that existing sign was, existing under conditional use permit. So then when the new sign was created, they're also subject to the conditional use permit. And so we're allowed to add additional conditions in granting them that location or that sign variance or conditional use permit, I should say.
I guess my point being, I'd like to see the same conditions put on this sign as well, if there were specific ones.
I guess we'd have to look that up. The only one I do remember specifically was the landscaping because it was just so ugly and they promised they would, and they did, so it was good, but I don't recall that.
We did.
Every call there was a, there was kind of like a range and we asked for the, I recall kind of the max, which was like 10 seconds or, there was a range that they had put in their proposal, but we had asked for the, the longest delay. That's what I recall, but that specific time, I'm not sure.
And I believe if Fairway wanted to agree to use this sign in a similar manner as the sign that we have located at QuickTrip, would that be agreeable?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that can be part of the motion, I assume. Okay.
Is there any other questions for the?
I do. I have a question. While we're considering this, to me, I feel like it's always good to, when you have a non-conforming come forward to get it into compliance. If we were to say that the dynamic was okay, but you need to solve the seven-foot clearance issue, is that something that you could do or would that kind of kill the whole deal?
Very good question. We will have an engineer determine the support underground as to if we can offset the head or the display. And by the way, I wasn't sure that it was clear earlier, we're only putting a dynamic on one side. The other side would still be a static side.
Oh.
So yes.
So it's.
Right, right.
So which side is?
The north face will be the dynamic. So traffic coming in towards the downtown area would be dynamic. And consequently, we need to make sure that it's, you know, secure and sound and meet all the codes and our industry's standards as well. But the idea is that we would offset it just a little, so instead of it being centered, it would be off the highway some to get that seven-foot requirement if the underneath supports the weight. Otherwise, we'd have to tear it all down and rebuild it, and that's not really what I think we were here tonight to talk about, and we didn't intend to suggest that we wanted to do that. So I, I think we can still do it. The operations manager has looked at it and he feels confident that that should not be an issue.
Yeah, some of it's not that much really when you're looking at that size.
Any other?
Yeah, just one question. You know, for a painted bulletin or a poster panel, you have potential deterioration simply because of the elements, right? And you see that quite often on an interstate in terms of billboards being just broken down. I know we talked previously in 2011. What's the arrangement or agreement concerning upkeep in terms of the bulbs and having proper lighting so that you're not having what we see on some storefronts where you have two letters and you're missing two letters and, so aesthetics, what's, what's in place?
These are actually LED, light emitting diodes. So there will be a panel, each about 12 inches by 12 inches with the diodes. Excuse me. Consequently, they will, they will never burn out. There will be some deterioration and we simply pop out the 12 by 12 and replace it. So it's not, it's not similar to what you're, you're referring to as far as the lights or backlit type of sign.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
If there's no more questions, I'd entertain a motion that would have some conditions attached to it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for approval of the sign appeal. What I would like as conditions, and what I'd like to state for the record is.
This is actually a recommendation to the city council.
Right, for approval of the sign appeal. I feel that because we do have other dynamic signs, especially the one for the appeal in 2011 near QuickTrip, that I'd like to see the same appeal conditions granted to this as what we granted to the sign appeal in 2011. I believe that the setback, the height, the sign area, even though that's not going to be modified, I would like to see that if it can be put into conformance that it does. And I, I just don't see that it's any kind of a problem to the general safety or general welfare, health safety and order of the city if we did not grant it. So I'm feeling fairly confident that this is fine.
So does your motion require that they do meet the setback standards?
I would like to see that they have addressed that, but I would not want to say that if they couldn't do it, that we would not grant the approval just based on that alone.
I would then, I would recommend that the, that the motion not include that, then if it's not a requirement. But we certainly would work with Fairway and they have indicated that they will have their engineer investigate that option.
Can you kind of sum it up, Lynn?
I would not, I would not be willing to pull the, pull the approval off the table if they could not come into compliance with that seven feet. So I don't want to make that a part of the motion.
Okay. So the motion, if I could restate the motion for clarification here, the motion is to recommend approval to the city council based on the same conditions as the previous sign in 2011.
Correct.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Will it also include the intention of reviewing the ordinance or is that independent of?
That would be independent.
That would be independent.
Okay. Fair?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Spanhour and a second by Commissioner Slicky. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I add something else?
Sure.
If we can assist in the writing of your ordinance, we certainly have experience in working with other communities, as well as the manufacturer, Daktronics, that you may be familiar with for some other signage, has sample ordinances that they could supply as well when you get to that point.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we hear the presentation on the second item on the agenda?
Yes. The second item on the agenda is a preliminary plat of Cedar Ridge subdivision number two. And this is, as you probably read in the materials, it's an unusual situation where there had already been a preliminary plat and some work done on subdivision with the county and the township of Lansing. The area was annexed prior to those documents being recorded, and so that necessitated the process to kind of start again, even though some improvements had already been made through the city. Or at least the, the preliminary plat was presented to the city for our process and subdivision pursuant to ordinance 13. The Cedar Ridge subdivision, here, I'll take this off. I've got, this is a satellite image of that area. It's not a great one. I didn't have a, a really good picture for you. The, this gives you kind of a zoomed in picture of this area and it would be this section here. And then this photo shows where 218 is over here. And then this is Highway 25 up here, just to kind of orient you as to where that area is, and if you're familiar with the Lansing area. The, let's see. The area is located east of 540th Avenue and south of County Road 25. The area being platted is 33.61 acres. The application that we received indicated that water service, and I don't believe that's included in our materials, indicates that water service would be privately owned and maintained. And this is a more rural development. And then this is the preliminary plat, if you can see that, and that should be in your materials as well. Sanitary sewer lines are existing and proposed and are shown in the preliminary plat, along with existing stormwater lines, ponds, and ditches. Section 13.20 of the Austin City Ordinance provides for a list of minimum improvements required for all subdivisions within the city. The ordinance specifically addresses roads and broader transportation issues in this specific area. In the Cedar Ridge development, 36th Avenue travels, it's an east-west road that travels through Cedar Ridge and connects directly to County Highway 25. And this is, let's see, 36th Avenue is this area right here. And then it turns into Sixth Street Northeast down in this area. The County Road 25 basically provides access to the remainder of the city to the south. And then in this area, there is, well, there is a requirement that the area be improved. There was initially, again, this was built as a rural section of road without any sidewalks. This neighborhood, because of the lack of connectivity outside the neighborhood, would probably not have sidewalks like we would expect them in a more urban environment. The dedication of park schools and similar public grounds, as identified in the comprehensive plan, are also required in ordinance section 13.20. There are no current facilities in this area. An alternative to dedicating parkland is a provision for a fee in lieu of land, and we have talked to Park and Rec, and they are recommending that they would prefer a fee in lieu of land at this point. Since there isn't the connection to the city, there's a lot of private property between what could potentially, you know, we looked at possible trails and ideas along those lines, but there's a lot of private property in between this subdivision and in between our current trail system. The, that would make it difficult for the city to achieve that goal. The current area that, and then the current area that would be required for this subdivision would be .24 acres, so not a huge amount of land. And then there are also, there are also provisions for giving credits depending on what kind of open area there is in the subdivision as well. The subdivision ordinance requires that there is due regard shown for natural features. There's a river, the Cedar River runs adjacent to the site. Virtually none of the flood plain or associated vegetation is within the proposed plat. There is one small wetland area. No development plan or, no development in that area is planned. And on the outlots, we would need, they would need additional city approval. And then the protection of that wetland area would fall under state and federal laws until more specific development plans were determined for that property. Well, actually, it would still continue to be under state and federal law. The subdivision statute also, our subdivision ordinance also requires a specific layout for streets and blocks within the areas to the north and south, previously developed and Cedar River to the east. The, the basic connection for that area, again, is Road, County Road 25 and a connection to Sixth Street Northeast to the south. There's also a requirement that lands abutting, so the County Road 25 lands abutting that highway, have additional buffer and that the parcels that are platted adjacent to County Road 25, Lot 1 and Outlet A, are wide enough to allow for screening on each of the private properties, which is essentially why they have a wider requirement or buffer area on those areas. The local streets which includes 36th Avenue are required to be a minimum of 65, or 66 feet wide. And the city engineer is currently reviewing the road specifications. And the city engineer is currently reviewing the road specifications and will make some recommendations. I think there were some things that would need to be improved in the road and in some of the utilities and I think the septic as well. Sanitary sewer lines were in place, however, they weren't, no stubs were shown. And the requirements regarding the sewer provisions will be addressed in our written development agreement. The specific requirements regarding the provision of water for both residential use and fire suppression will also be, will be addressed in a development agreement. The utility easement and likely a drainage easement would also be developed in a future development agreement. The, there are also additional requirements for installing driveways and then sediment and erosion control plans would be implemented and those would be approved by the city engineer and those issues would also be developed and, it would also be addressed in development agreements. The annexed lands would come in under R1 zoning district. There's a table that lists the setbacks and lot coverage requirements for an R1 zoning district and all the lots in Cedar Ridge number two exceed the area and width requirements. It's also noted here that a small portion of the subdivision is located within the shoreline overlay zone because the lots are very large, they will easily accommodate a typical residential development and still meet the shoreline standards which are then also located, are indicated in a table. The, in conclusion, the infrastructure, as we've already noted or as I've already noted, was developed in the neighborhood prior to being annexed to the city. The character of the area is more rural in nature than the neighborhoods that we typically review for subdivision. The area does not meet all the requirements specified within the subdivision ordinance. However, we have historically allowed some variation to those requirements in similar situations in order to maintain the nature and character of the existing development patterns. Some modifications would be needed to continue, to come up to the standards for the roads and then the extensions of the sewer, those issues and any other issues that you feel should be addressed or anything that you see as a concern or, or just any comments that you may have could be addressed in a final plat or future development agreement with the city. And then there's just some, there were a couple bulleted points at the end of the report that the city was, or the planning commission was asked to look at and potentially make some remarks on or some comments. And then the planning commission would then make, make some recommendations if they felt it was necessary. Otherwise, it's basically just an initial review of the project and there will be a final plat and further development as we move forward, or as the developer moves forward and he will be working with the city on all of the details that would be involved in making those usable for residential purposes.
Can you talk a little bit more about the park dedication and fee in lieu of that? I think you mentioned .24 acres. What kind of a fee would that be and is there any more detail on that?
You know, I'm not sure what the fee would be. Maybe Mr. Lang could speak to that issue.
I don't know the fee either, but the way the acreage was calculated is it's on a per lot or per dwelling basis, .008 acres per dwelling. And in this case, we looked at those, the existing interior lots that are being developed, there's six lots there. Again, as Ms. Wallace described, those lots are much larger than a typical residential lot in town, but we used those six lots and kind of estimated that Outlot A, B, C and D could be developed into six lots per outlot. Taking that total number of lots times the .008 acres per lot is where, how we came up with that estimated .24 acres for a park dedication allotment. But again, apologize, I don't know what the fee would be or how that would be incorporated. We'll research that some more.
And I would add again that depending on how the area is developed as we move forward, there could be credits, again, for any open spaces or other areas that are left natural to the area.
Another question about sidewalks. So we're proposing that this moves forward not conforming with complete streets policy because it isn't rural, rural in nature and we expect it to remain that way for the foreseeable future?
I would say so. The, all the areas that are developed connecting to this, none of them have sidewalks, they're just rural roads and highways in that area.
We, just, we did talk about that a little bit before the meeting and that will be something that will iron out in the development agreement. The developer does own some existing lots to the south and then it does turn into, like Holly described, a more developed area, but we will, with the connection out to the county road, there may be an opportunity to incorporate a, maybe a narrow trail through here instead of a sidewalk, a narrow trail in the right-of-way area to provide an off-street pedestrian walking space for the residents. Working with the developer to get that in during this phase, working with the developer to continue it south across some of his existing lots and then we would come upon those existing residential parcels that would then, we would need to work with those people to create a connection maybe back to the county road. But, but that could be something that we would look at as part of the development agreement.
Other questions?
The developer, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, is there any estimate on the total number of lots we're talking about then? How A, B, C, and D, they designed to be multiple lots in the...
The lots on the, sorry to interrupt, the lots on the interior of the 36th Avenue, so in, in here, in this area?
Right.
Have been more developed, the lots on the outside, or on the outer part of that to the north would be, would require further work with the city more than what we have currently presented.
They would be presented.
Yeah, they would have to go through this same process.
Okay, so we're just...
The preliminary plat for those outlots.
Are we just talking about the ones on the...
Well, it's all being, it's all, it's all being platted. It all has to go through this process again because it wasn't recorded with the County Recorder's Office, correct? If I'm, but it's, but specifically the subdivision is the interior.
Yep, he's, the developer's creating six developable residential lots inside the area Holly has described and those other four outlots will be, will come back for future development and subdivide it accordingly.
So we are not, we are not looking at those outlots right now as part of this plat review?
It is part of this overall plat, yes, but they are not developable as part of this plat. When it's called an outlot, it's not developable.
Okay.
Good question.
Would we...
Oh, yeah, and we do have, I'm not sure if it shows on your map, but there was a request from Austin Utilities to grant an easement. And that is, it should be in orange on your map.
Part of the developer agreement?
Yes, that would be, yes. And then there would probably be additional criteria for drainage and sewer and other things of that nature.
Okay.
Ms. Spanhour, that actually would be a change to the plat. That easement would actually be shown on the plat, not part of the development agreement, but the easement request from Austin Utilities would be shown on the, on the final plat.
Okay.
Are there any questions or would you like to hear from, would the developer like to make any comments? You're welcome to.
Sure.
No problem. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mike Olson, address 3403 6th Street Northeast, Austin. I'm the owner of Cedar Ridge Development and proposed Cedar Ridge number two.
Do you have any general statements or...
Yeah, and just kind of bring you up to speed with the whole process. The development was originally in the Lansing Township, originated in the 2004 timeframe. The six lots on the southern part are already in legal plat here that we're looking at. And these six that I'm bringing into final plat now are just part of the plan, growth of the development. And the remaining four outlots would be for future development. The original plan, when this was in the township, before it went through the city annexation was, it's a 12-person residential will to serve these 12 lots, the six that are already in final plat and then the six proposed. And once upon a time, it was planned just to have the four outlots and open outlots in Farmham and Alfalfa as they are now as they're not quite as desirable in areas some of the other lots here.
So the six that are already platted and developed are the six that are in Block One and Block Two to the south side of the storm pond, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's two homes built now in that southern portion, my own and another one.
Okay. There some questions for Mr. Olson?
I have a question, actually, a little bit more of a statement. I happen to know that there are some volunteer groups that are looking at extending the city bike trail system up, not on this land that we're talking about today, but some other property that you own near the old golf course. And they'd like to have a trail that would lead from the old mill area up to the abandoned railroad bridge and be able to go across the bridge to the science and nature area. So I would invite you as you're doing your negotiations on the development agreement that you certainly could give the city all of that land, although it would far exceed .24 acres that you're required. But I feel like...
She slipped in nicely.
Yeah.
I like the way she slipped in.
I feel like I should get that on the record as part of my employment outside of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Sure, no, I have heard a couple comments. Mike Hanson has originally said something to me about that and, yeah, that's a property that's currently being used, but it is something that would tie in nicely as a, as a bike trail and it sounds like Division 2020 is a very positive thing coming here, so more than willing to work with them somehow if we can, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, could I entertain a motion for a recommendation to the city council?
I'll make a motion as a recommendation to the city council to approve the preliminary plat request as presented.
Do we need to add the utility easement in at this time?
Under these conditions?
That could be added, yes, to the motion that you would...
So we're looking at...
That we approve it with the utility easement.
Dedication.
And the fee in lieu of...
Those three bullet points on the...
So could I suggest the motion is that the utility easement is added to the official preliminary plat and that the other bullet points are subject to negotiation of the development agreement?
The motion rests with you.
Yeah.
Steve, do you want to...
I'll just take it for you.
Yeah.
She's a busy bee today.
Yes, I would add that as well in terms of the utility easement. I think that should be part of it if we look at that and also, if you want to include, also include the...
Three bullet points?
Yep, the bullet points and the, and the park either contribution or property.
That's the first bullet point, so that would be covered.
Yep.
So I have a motion.
Did that cover everything?
I have a motion, is there, to recommend approval, including the utility easement and the three bullet points on the recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Haley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe that we have any other business.
We'll, we welcome our new planner or new administrator.
Yeah, I guess I could, I could introduce myself if you like.
Sure.
Sure, maybe for the people watching.
I'm sure, sorry, I didn't give you that opportunity to start with.
Yeah, I didn't think of it either. My name is Holly Wallace. I am a former planning commission member since 2011. I recently took over for Craig Hoyam who previously held this position. My new title is Planning and Zoning Administrator and I started October 2nd, so I've been in the, on the job for a few days and I'm happy to be here with familiar faces and look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay, thank you. Welcome again and we look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you.
Good job, Holly.
So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We adjourn. Thank you.